All right, I would like to call to order the September 2nd Milford City Council meeting. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor.
Excuse me.
Mayor Evans?
Here.
Vice Mayor Parrish?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Thompson? Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Here. Do I have a motion to excuse Mr. Thompson?
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, we will start off the evening with a swearing in of a Parks and Rec Commission member. Is Tim here tonight?
Is here.
There he is. Meet Mr. Pacheco at the podium.
All right.
I say your name, please.
I, Tim Moots.
Promise and swear.
Promise and swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States of America?
To support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio?
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Milford.
And the Charter of the City of Milford.
And faithfully?
And faithfully.
Honestly?
Honestly.
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Parks and Recreation Commission Member.
Parks and Recreation Commission Member.
To the best of my abilities?
To the best of my abilities.
To help me God.
To help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for volunteering for the city. We're glad to have you on board.
Tim and his wife relocated to this area, and they really wanted to get involved, so.
Awesome.
Welcome, and thank you for being interested.
All right, that takes us to a proclamation honoring the Milford Band. So if Dr. Tim Daly is here, and any other band members that want to come up to the podium? So the proclamation reads that whereas the Milford Band is celebrating their 100th anniversary in 2025, and whereas this 100-year celebration is a testament to the enduring presence and impact of the Milford Bands within the Milford Exempt Village School District and the wider community, and whereas since 1924, the Milford Band Program has been making music from 6th grade through high school, including jazz band, percussion ensemble, marching band, color guard, and winter guard, celebrating a century of sound, and whereas we are excited to be part of the 100 years of the Milford Band Celebration. So now therefore I, Lisa Evans, on behalf of my council colleagues and the Milford City Council, and the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor, do hereby recognize and commend the Milford Eagles Band longevity as a testament to the dedication of students, staff, and the Milford community. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I just thought maybe you want to give everybody a little information about the band and what all you do?
Yeah, I should be glad to.
Yes.
Hi, everyone, I'm Tim Daly, I'm the High School Band Director. This is Grayson Myers, he's Assistant Band Director, one of our Assistant Band Directors. We are here with Andrew Cook and Drew Howdyshell, who are two of our awesome seniors. We would have had more seniors here, but we were on the practice field like an hour ago. So many people were sweaty and went home to eat dinner and all of that. But thank you so much for the recognition and for having us here tonight. 1924, when the band was founded, a very long time ago, before any of us were around, and the world was a very different place, but people in Milford decided that music education in the school was important, that having a school band program was an important part of our community, and that has not changed. So it's really a privilege to be the director for the program, as we get to celebrate this over the course of the year. And thank you all of you for your contributions. I know some of you have probably encountered the band at some point or another, whether you had children that went through the program, or maybe you were in the band when you went through school yourself, but it's really an honor to be, you know, in charge of that right now, to be able to see it through to the next 100 years, or however long I can hold up. Okay, thank you all. Thank you.
All right, that takes us to proceedings. Do I have a motion to approve the council meeting proceedings from August 19th?
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
And financial statements. So I have a motion to adopt the July 2025 financial report.
So moved?
Second.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
That takes us to our first public comment section. Just a reminder to please address council, and limit your comments to five minutes, and make sure you state your name and address for the record. Would anyone like to make a comment? Come on up.
Hi, I'm John Becker, 925 Locust Lane, Cincinnati, it's in Union Township. I used to be your State Representative from 2013 through 2020. I attended these meetings routinely. I'm currently a Union Township trustee. The reason I'm here this evening is I'm kind of on a listening tour. That's because there is a draft Becker Movement afoot for Clamont County Auditor. Linda Fraley is retiring. And so I'm considering if it's something I want to do or not, and there's a lot of responsibilities, a lot to go along with the office. So I'm looking for input from you all, or from the audience, anybody out in the city of Milford that's watching this, to give me your thoughts on this. And, you know, so why is there a draft Becker Movement? Well, it's because of my resume. I have an MBA with an emphasis in taxation, I'm a Certified Treasury Professional, I have 30 years of business experience, which includes accounting, management, a lot of financial reporting, that sort of thing. And like I said, my political experience, State Representatives, I got statewide, or Columbus experience as a State Representative, plus local government. Is there any questions for me on anything, or do you have any immediate input?
I think so.
No? But thanks.
Thank you.
If you want to get ahold of me, it's beckertop.com, easy to find. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a public comment? Sure, come on up.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Shad Barth. I've been the General Manager of the Cinemark Movie Theater for about 20 years now. I pride myself in that we're more, I feel like we're more than a cinema. We're a hub for the community, we're a leading employer of young people in the city. We're a gathering place, a community hub. We try our best to contribute to police department, to schools, as much as we can. And I'd like to explain why we oppose an increase to the cinema admission tax, and why it matters to our guests, our team, and the businesses around us. Milford currently has a 3% admission tax under Chapter 187, which is equal to bigger cities like Cincinnati, and strikes a fair balance between raising revenues and keeping tickets affordable. That matters because moviegoing is a shared out-of-home experience for everyone, regardless of background or budget. And the benefits extend beyond the box office. A trip to the Cinemark, Milford 16, becomes a dinner and shopping at local establishments. According to a recent study by the Beacon Economics, for every dollar spent at an American movie theater, an additional $1.50 is spent in the area's local economy. But those benefits depend upon people showing up. Raising the admission tax would be regressive by pushing ticket prices up and attendance down. The budget bump and increased tax revenue would be modest at best, but the trade-offs are quite serious. You know, it's going to be fewer visits, slower foot traffic for nearby restaurants and shops, and added pressure on my cinema. It's worth noting that our four closest competitors, that's RJ Cinemas, Pierce Point Cinemas, AMC on Beaumont, and Regal in Deerfield Township, currently have no admission tax in their respective townships or municipalities. The takeaway is simple there, that, you know, with us being an anchor of Cinemark, or on River's Edge, it will be a big burden for us to carry for our customers. And, you know, furthermore, the proposed tax increase comes as admissions are still significantly below pre-pandemic levels. The nationwide summer box office landed below what many expected, and the recent writer's strike, writers' and actors' strike left a gap in our release slate that we're still working through. Movie theaters are resilient, you know, we've been around forever. I'm confident that that is, you know, we're moving in the right direction, but now is the time to support moviegoing, not add friction that could dampen the attendance and the local spending. That's why I urge you to keep Milford Cinema Admission Tax at 3%. I appreciate your time.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to make a comment?
Hello. My name is Stephen Oliver, 547 Garfield Avenue. I was here last meeting, probably at a poorly timed meeting, because it was a completely different topic, but I want to thank the council for always giving me accommodations going over time. I have a tendency to be negligent of keeping track of time, so thank you. It's an honor to be here in front of my fellow citizens to express my opposition to the FC Cincinnati Mini Pitch. It may look like I'm a stickler and simply someone who just...
I don't want to be rude, you're addressing us.
Not them.
Not them, you're addressing us.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I hope Johnny Velardo is doing well. I remember him at my St. Andrews as a kid, I've been meaning to say that too. In essence, though, this concerns every citizen, so I feel like what I have to say addresses the citizens as well. But the argument that I'm presenting is simply just an improper location for the FC Mini Pitch. Riverside 2 is a historic park founded in 1904, and the average citizen may not know that, but the Historical Society confirmed that. Riverside 2 is home of the Frontiers Festival, which has contractual agreements for some vendors during the Frontiers Festival, and it sounds like those contracts have already been made. This may have a conflict with that. Riverside provides an open green space for multiple recreational activities, and I've seen frisbee, soccer, all sorts of things. So the conflict of development that I believe is the city's implying that this is an endorsement of soccer and a healthy lifestyle, but a green space in a public park already promotes that. Now, the term number seven prevents and restricts the fair use of the green space by allowing FC Cincinnati to limit the use of the space for soccer only. Yet a green space can accommodate for that entirely, and multiple other things. Riverside 2 is, Riverside 2 utilized a land and water conservation grant of approximately $118,000 in 2020, per the Community Development Committee, which I guess doesn't exist anymore. Term number eight authorizes the FCC Foundation to display permanent commercial signage of the Foundation and their third-party sponsors in a public green space that's paid and owned by the taxpayers and the citizens. This, in essence, in my opinion, complies a commercial project. This isn't a public, you know, blank canvas. This is promoting FC Cincinnati and their third-party sponsors. I have copies of the Memorandum of Understandings and the Terms of Agreements, if you would like to look through it, I have many copies. However, the ODNR grants, the grant requirement states that property developed within land and water conservation assistance must be forever retained and used for public recreation. In my opinion, though, this limits the use of public recreation. It doesn't add to the park, it subtracts to the park. To continue. I have contacted the Conservation Compliance Manager to do a site inspection to make sure that it's in compliance with the grant. I've also contacted the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. To continue, improper business dealings. The city was sued in 2018 for holding secret meetings with FC Cincinnati to advance the sale of Expressway Park. You may have different opinions on that, and I respect the difference of opinion. My opinion is that is an improper business dealing. The city should not be entering into contracts with FC Cincinnati in consideration of that 2019 lawsuit, which alleges and confirms a violation in the Ohio Open Meeting Act. Milford provides various venues for both private and public soccer and healthy lifestyle activities. Finley Ray, Miami Meadows, Riverside 2.
You have about one minute.
Thank you, Mayor. Miami Meadows, other various locations. The need for soccer, and I grew up playing soccer, there is no need for this, in my opinion, and I ask that you respect that. To continue. And to reiterate, the demand of this project is nonexistent. This, to me, is just sort of a commercial project. My question for you, Mayor. Does the commercial implications of some of the terms, can this be reasonably suggested that an average citizen like me can interpret this as a commercial project, when you're allowing the signage of FC Cincinnati and the Foundation and their third-party sponsors? This is a direct question I ask that you answer. Please.
You have about 30 seconds if you want to wrap up.
Why is it that you're answering questions at the parking meeting, but I'm here for this specific meeting, and I just asked you a question you didn't answer?
This is a chance for you to share your comments.
I'm asking an answer from our highest official in office.
Yeah.
Our mayor.
Your time is up.
This should implicate, yes. And again, thank you for allowing me to just slightly go a little bit over, I just have one more point. Does the restrictive use of this parcel of Riverside 2 constitute a violation of the land and water conservation grant? Does it? We'll find that out once the site manager comes out to inspect it.
Thank you for your comments.
But lastly, and if I may, this is 10 seconds. Commercial advertising defeats the sanctity of our public parks and green spaces. We are to promote peace, happiness, education, and a fair and equal access space for all to conduct themselves in whatever recreational activity they desire.
Thank you.
And thank you again for your service to our community.
Does anybody else would like to make a comment?
I could have probably got a ton more, it's just that I wanted to make sure I got to track you, because I didn't even know about it.
Thank you.
So they saw it on Facebook today.
Yeah, we have a petition.
Come on up, gentlemen.
We have a petition with 50 multiple signatures.
Your time is already up, so thank you.
So do you not care for the petition?
No, thank you.
Your time's done.
You heard it here, folks.
Hello, I'm Eric Scholes, 117 Eagleview in the Erie subdivision. My question is around, I haven't seen the drawings for this proposed pitch, but the question is, will it be fenced?
Yes.
Will it be gated and locked?
I believe so.
The structure itself is entirely enclosed, it's not like an open field, so if you, are you familiar with like a hockey arena? Or, okay, so you know how the boards are fully enclosed in terms of the ice itself? That's how the mini pitch works. So there's going to be an entrance way, but it's not just two soccer nets and in a turf field, it's fully enclosed.
So a three-foot surrounding fence?
There's one at Luncan Airport, I don't believe they lock it.
It's open, I think your question, if I may.
It's to the public.
Yeah, it's open, the gate is not locked. Okay, so if I want to go play soccer?
Sure.
I can just do it as a resident?
Sure.
Correct.
That's all the question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address council? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the City Manager Report. Mr. Gunderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things on the report. I wanted to mention that we had two kickoff meetings, one with the Five Points Irrigation Contractor. We're confident that the project will start this upcoming month. There's a few things that we discussed, the rear flowerbed against the mural, that was not included in the irrigation contracts, and we requested an estimate on that. And then that of also running electric down the sidewalk there through the middle of the park. We're thinking into the future in terms of events and so forth, so we wanted to get a quote on that, and if we decide to add it, great, if not, then no worries. The contractor itself has no concerns in terms of getting it done this year, so we are making strides on that. We also kicked off our 2025 Health Initiative. We had 15 participants. It's a 13-win challenge, so I'm pretty excited for that. And the other two quick things, we had two ribbon cuttings, note and needle, and the Learning Nest. We're excited to welcome both of those businesses to the community, and we're excited and thankful for their investment. Last thing I wanted to really address was, I've been extremely excited, and it makes me happy to see the responses from the last meeting. There's a lot of businesses, a lot of community owners that reached out and thanked us, not only for hearing them out and making a decision that's sort of aligned with them, but they really further emphasize the communication, and, you know, I continue to state that this council is open to public comments and getting the opinions from the community, and I think we do that very well. And, you know, I think the difference between a good community and a great community is that of, one of the variables is eliminating that communication barrier. So I think we've got a lot of very smart and passionate people in this community. We've got one that relocated here and wants to be on the park board, and that commitment just, it really means a lot to staff, and I think I can speak for council on that. So I'm excited to see the direction we go as a community. We appreciate the support, and that is all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us to Chief Mills and the Police Report.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. I'm still putting together my August monthly report, so don't have anything in terms of a formal report, but if you haven't heard, Friday's bittersweet, it's Tina Kern's last day, as she is going to enjoy her well-earned retirement. And then September 15th, retired Sergeant Paul Lane, who has been back in a part-time capacity since January, is going to step into that role for us. So it's an incredible win-win for us, super excited about that. I did want to publicly thank Shad Barth for his donation, he's done it more than once, but if you were at National Night Out, you know, it rained out after about the first hour, but they donated the cotton candy, and I think by all accounts, that was kind of the highlight of the night. We went through that really quickly, but it's their famous cotton candy, you can't beat it. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's chief.
That takes us to Chief Baird and Fire and EMS.
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things. First, I want to remind the community that our annual 9/11 memorial service will be held on Thursday, September 11th, 2025, at 9:00 AM at the memorial site in front of the fire station on US 15. That's a rain or shine, excuse me, a rain or shine event, and look forward to having people there to observe the 24th anniversary of the attacks on the United States. We try to keep the service relatively short, 15 to 20 minutes. We know people have a lot of things going on weekdays, but yeah, also take time to remember those who died in the 9/11 terrorist attack on our country. And just one other note, the board, the Fire Board approved the purchase of a new ambulance. We're going to be ordering a new ambulance here in the next couple of weeks. We are expecting delivery in somewhere around two to three years, so that's why we are getting ahead of the curve a little bit. Kind of incredibly, our 2021 ambulance, 2021 chassis, which has a 2012 box sitting on it, we had a remount done back in 2021, is, by the time this vehicle arrives, will be, if my math doesn't fail me, four or five years into its life already, and that's usually the time that we start moving them into a reserve role. And this will allow us, this purchase will allow us to go into a little bit different rotation with how we replace the ambulances, and more importantly, it'll put us back having three ambulances available. We enjoyed that for a period of about two years after we purchased a used ambulance, and that gave us some buffer room when we had a vehicle out of service for maintenance or repairs of some kind. We have an uncanny knack of having to call the neighbors a terrible amount to come in to cover ambulance runs when we are down to one ambulance. And so it worked out well for us having three ambulances at any given time. We'll only actually run two of them at a time, the third one will be a mechanical spare that'll slide into place when we need to use it. Purchase price, which just boggles my mind from when I started in the business nearly 42 years ago, $475,000. That's, and that's all in with the stretcher, the power load, all the stuff that we typically use. We're going to finance about $375,000 of that, the other $100,000 we're going to take care of with alternative funding and capital improvements money. And, but that's all in, all the radios, the mobile data computers, the stretcher, the power load, everything basically to get it ready to go on the road as soon as it arrives. So graphics, and so hopefully in two or three years, we'll be talking about the delivery of the new ambulance. So that's all I have, any questions for us?
Any updates on the old 45?
I haven't talked to Mr. Sora yet in September, but any moment, it should be going to have the work started on it, so we're looking forward to that.
Awesome.
Our fundraising for it, the community was just incredibly generous, not only the business community, but the private citizen part of the community as well. We raised $15,000, just about as fast as you could raise $15,000. I think people like the truck, so we want to take care of it and have it for another 80 years. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to council comments, anybody?
I have a quick question for Mr. Gunderson. Do we have any update on the street resurfacing program, and the streets that should be getting done this year?
Yeah, so we get weekly updates, we haven't made it to the list yet. One of the things that we're looking at is on State Route 28 with the water and sewer. When we repaved that, it was really supposed to be a patch job until we get to the resurfacing. However, we looked at Railroad Street, and that's a huge concern for us, so we did look to see if we can price that out, to see if that might be something we look at exchanging, and then we would look to put 28 maybe on next year, but they're making their way through the list, and we just haven't made the list yet.
Okay, thank you.
So I can provide that to council on a weekly basis. I know they've been in Union Township a lot here recently, we just, hopefully we're next.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
And just for planning purposes, the next council meeting, the 16th, I will unfortunately be out of town, I have to be out of town, I'll send an official notice, but just for planning purposes.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. There is a program called Read Aloud, A-L-O-U-D.org. Kim connected with Michelson Homes. Basically, the program promotes reading, 15 minutes a day from birth. But you have some of these little houses or whatever, that, like Michelson's have one, I think maybe with food or whatever, but it has books in it. So Michelson's has agreed to build that for us. It's basically a no-cost thing, other than us promoting it, and they're going to put it at Riverside 2, so it's undercover somewhat. So we're excited about that, and we talked about it in Parks and Rec, and thank you, Kim, for getting that together.
I think it'll be a great partnership with us and this nonprofit, and to promote reading in our park and another activity that parents can do while they're at the playground. And Michelson's Homes does a great job, and very happy that they've offered to say yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And speaking of promoting, and how much longer is the farmer's market, till, when do we go to?
The last Saturday, the 27th, same day as Art Affair.
Yeah, that's the last Saturday.
That is the last Saturday, through this month.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right, that takes us to our Committee of the Hole meeting. Do I have a motion to open the Committee of the Hole meeting?
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, call to order the public of the hole meeting. Jackie, will you take the roll, please?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Parrish?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Here.
And that takes us to the public comment section of the Committee of a Hole. If anyone has a comment to make on any of the agenda items, feel free to do so. All right, alternative to...
Please, I'll keep it very brief. I just, if I'm mistaken, you said you don't care about a petition that I have, with various signatures of business owners and citizens in the city of Milford that are in opposition to this project taking place at Riverside 2 Park. Did I hear that correct?
Feel free to bring it to the office.
I submitted it last meeting to the clerk, and it just sat there the whole meeting, and I took it off the desk, because the hard work that I put in as a citizen to gather these signatures, and firstly, I took off of work tonight to be here. I sacrificed my income, which is a very difficult thing to do, especially now, to attend this meeting. That is a sacrifice that citizens have to make, to be involved in government, and also to to advocate for things to care about. And Mr. Pacheco, I know this is the most probably boring subject that you've ever had to bear through, but you represent the council. I believe I represent the citizens of Milford, which I believe takes more priority, respectfully. Why are we using a public space to build a field for FC Cincinnati, a historic field? I'm just curious. Can we keep it blank? Can we move it to a different location? Is it possible, Mayor? Is it possible to move to a different location? Genuinely. This is not just some random field in the middle of nowhere. This has the Frontiers Festival. This accommodates to multiple recreational uses. Teams practice on this field. And you're allowing FC Cincinnati to put their stamp, all because confirmed by the clerk that it failed in some other township or county or city that they tried to advocate this in, so they moved it. Well, then you need to address your clerk, because this is the information she's sending me through my public records requests. I have repeatedly tried to get the information, repeatedly. Mr. Gunderson, you called me, and I appreciate that. And truthfully, I think he's a very intelligent man. And I'm actually kind of happy to have someone of our generation serving in our city government. But the point I'm making is, is why? Why? Truly, why? I've lived here my whole life. That field has been a beautiful field. It's been a beautiful park. And it takes one administration to convert it over to something that it didn't have to be? Is there a reason for this? I'm asking you. Why is it that you're silent when I ask you a question? You don't feel accountable to the people?
I've begged for this for a year, so I'm-
Why do you beg, though? Why?
Because I think it's great for our residents.
Yeah, but you think it's great.
No, we all decided.
Okay, yeah, you as a council decided, and I respect your initiative as a government. But what about the people that you serve? What about the people that you serve?
I don't think they have the right information.
What do you mean, they don't have the right information? All the information that's been disseminated has been the information-
You have like about a minute.
-your office. Thank you for reminding me of the time. Truly, I'm providing the public with the information that your clerk is submitting to me. Mr. Pacheco told me I wasn't entitled to know the Motts Group, Moats, whatever, communications, even though the city manager designated this as a project in the Parks and Recreation. And the Motts Group, Moats, whatever, is the project manager. They're the ones that are going to be building this. And I'm not entitled to the information? It just doesn't seem like good government, respectfully. I know you may disagree, but it doesn't seem transparent. FC Cincinnati is not Milford. Milford is Milford, 1836. 1836, Thomas Jefferson signed the land grant to the Gatch family. Thomas Jefferson.
If you could wrap up, please.
I'd be happy to. The Promont, the Historical Society confirmed that this park is historic. And if I have to go to the Ohio Means History Department and push for this to be designated as a historic park, I will. I'm not going to give up, because I don't think this is necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments as part of our committee of the whole? Sure, come on up.
Hello?
Hi.
Dan Romas, 5039 Bayberry Drive, Sycamore Township. I saw AEDs are on the agenda tonight, just here to support that. My sister unfortunately passed away at Riverside Park in March of 2023. Fire Station's really not far away. It's really not. But unfortunately, she had a catastrophic heart event, and she lost her life. So just want to be here to support her, and I feel like it's the right thing to do. If you go around town, look at other parks, they got them. And it's it's time for Milford to do it. So here to have help and support anyway, and find a solution that works for everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to make a comment?
Rachel Richardson, 907 Center Street. First, thank you for your input. I was trained as an EMT. I also support the AEDs and parks. I have some, I hear about the FCC mini pitch. Have some questions about it. If you are prepared to address this in your conversation, feel free to wait to address these questions at a later time. Interesting project. It's getting kind of a mixed reaction in our local Facebook community group, largely positive, though. A lot of people are excited about it. My, the questions that I would like to see answered here tonight as part of your discussion are, I understand as part of the contract that FCC will bear the initial construction costs, but the ongoing annual costs are to be borne by the city. I would like to know what those annual costs to the city are projected to be. Also, I understand that per the contract, FC Cincinnati and the foundation would get first right of usage. There's some language in there about, you know, they have to check in with the city, but there's no language in there about the frequency of that usage. So I wanted to know what kind of conversations the city has had about the expected frequency of usage that FC Cincinnati would be using the facility. Because if this is something that is supposed to be public, but yet it's constantly in use by FC Cincinnati, that's something that I think the public would want to know. And then thirdly, there are concerns about the location of this. I understand it's a great location right by the playground. There's the parking lot, great visibility. But there are concerns that this could impede festivals and events. Frontier Day, we had a fantastic first annual pride event that is supposed to be an annual event. There are other festivals and events that use the park. The city has a lot of properties surrounding Riverside Park, so I just wanted to see some discussion on why this particular location, and if the city had considered any of the outlying parts of Riverside Park that the city owns for this.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to make a public comment? All right. Then I will turn it over to Mr. Gunderson.
Thank you, Mayor. All righty. First, on the committee of the whole agenda is the Little Miami Brewery Event Center property tax rebate contract. This was something I brought up last meeting for consideration, and council was supportive to bring this to this meeting for about. As a friendly reminder, what this was, the contract started two years before the increased taxable value actually hit the property tax card. It was my opinion that in order to fully maximize that incentive, it should have waited until that increased value hit the property tax card. So through further discussion, through discussion with council, we decided to bump that back two years, and that is what is reflected in the ordinance that is recommended to council. So simply just confirming what we had discussed last meeting.
And just for clarification, so that puts it, what length of time?
So it would it would effectively end in 2026.
Okay.
Well, I would then make a motion recommending that the law director draft an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a tax rebate contract with Little Miami Brewery Event Center. Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the list is the FCC Foundation, FC Cincinnati Foundation Mini Pitch Final Agreement. The the Mini Pitch that is before, or the Final Agreement, excuse me, for the Mini Pitch is exactly aligned with the MOU that was passed previously by council to address some of the, or to address some of the questions that have been asked previously. In terms of ongoing costs, we don't expect there to be a substantial amount of ongoing costs. There's very little components to this. If it's something to do with, if there's, for example, leaves on the on the turf, let's say, that would be something that we would, of course, clean, and if it's debris, sticks, and so forth, that's something that is on us. If we put landscaping around the Mini Pitch, which is commonly done, that would be on us. Of course, maintaining the area surrounding that of the Mini Pitch is already something that we would do and we would continue to do. So in terms of ongoing costs, we expect very little. In terms of the first right of refusal, FC Cincinnati utilizes the Mini Pitch for anything related to soccer camps. They don't have matches or games or anything of that nature there. So if there's an FC Cincinnati soccer camp, that would be a good location to offer it. Other than that, they don't have a consistent use. It would consistently be open for the public. In fact, we spoke with the soccer organization, the Milford Soccer Organization. They want to offer fall games there for the five and six-year-olds. So the soccer organization certainly is on board with that, and and there would be public use. We also are looking to partner with any, the Milford Schools or local nonprofits to offer any soccer camps in conjunction or in addition to FC Cincinnati. So this is very much a public amenity that we are looking to offer to the community. In terms of the events, I certainly recognize, I know Frontier Days has been thrown out there twice, and recognize that that is something that has been a location in the past. And as I've said from the start, even from the initial discussion I brought up with Parks and Rec, that's something that I think is a partnership between the events, and how is it that we can shift or relocate? We've got Riverside One that is in that area. That can also be a feasible location for some of these events. And and, you know, to me, we we make decisions for for the community as a whole, and and we've got 365 days throughout the year. And we need to create an environment that is, I think, suitable for events and the community. And we need to partner and figure out how is it that we can shift some of these events, if it's the rides, if we have to shift them a little bit, move them back, you know, it doesn't have to be on that exact blade of grass. So I I'm confident that we can figure out a solution to any of the inconveniences moving forward. And then lastly, sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
I was just going to say, my husband has helped run Frontier Days for the last 35 years, and he's already reached out to the ride company, and they already have a new layout planned and are working on, if this is happening, what's going to be where. They're also going to reach out to FC Cincinnati or just someone in the chamber to run a three-on-three possible soccer tournament during Frontier Day's time to promote it and help people use it. So.
Awesome. And then lastly, I think the last one was location. We had, and I discussed this from the beginning, we we looked at three locations, Riverside One, and then two at Riverside Two. And as mentioned previously, the the whole point behind this specific location is it's close to the to the playground, it's close to the parking lot, the pavilion, the light, and 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 then the the visual proximity to that of the downtown. And that is why we we recommended that site, and that's why we chose it. So that's how we ended up on that location.
And looking at the map, it looks like it's the best use of that state.
Yeah, I think we've discussed this now for three, four years. And as someone who grew up here, who played ball down there when it was Bosch and Coogler Field, to watch that park, and all the parks for that matter, evolve and to add different amenities, not every amenity is for everyone. Some people, we have tennis courts. Not everyone plays tennis. We talked about pickleball. Not everyone plays pickleball. We've got a walking trail. We've got the playgrounds at some parks. We've got green space of the park. So I I think to say that this is or isn't a good spot for for this particular product is, you know, subjective. And I believe that the citizens as a whole, and I do hear from the citizens, and citizens, for the most part, have been in agreement. And we've had some real positive comments. I know Mayor Evans has been a champion this, and I applaud her to to answer one of those questions about why, why did we get it? It wasn't that they came to us, and that they chose us, and and we accepted that. And we worked with the foundation. And I think we should clarify, too. We keep talking about FC Cincinnati, but there's the foundation that runs this, the nonprofit foundation that runs this. I know they share a very similar name. I know that they're they are tied in. I'm not naive that they're not tied in. But this is the nonprofit group of FC Cincinnati. And one of the questions I had to address the crowd was the cost. How much would it cost? That was a question I think we we discussed. And correct my wrong, city manager, that it is in one of these things-
Paragraph six.
Yeah, that it's a $25,000, you know, if if there is some sort of catastrophic, the most we would be on the hook for is $25,000. So I think that might answer some of those questions that if, you know, and that's over the whole length of the of the useful life of the the Mini Pitch. So with that being said, I was on the fence for a long time whether or not I, you know, supported this. But as this has evolved, I've I've come to understand that there is a large facility of residents and others who visit our park that are really going to benefit from this. And so I applaud us for for making this step and enhancing our parks. We're not taking anything away. We're truly enhancing our parks. So it's not an easy decision. Are we going to make everyone happy all the time? Absolutely not. But I believe the majority of people have spoken in favor, and so I think that's, just needs to be said.
So Mayor, just to further up paragraph six, Mr. Velardo brought up the cost, and also in paragraph seven, and also with respect to the user restrictions that are set forth there, and also the fact that while they have asked for, if you will, a first priority, that's subject to reasonable advance notice to us. So I mean, we have control. This is not something, as has been pointed out earlier, as negotiated. It's not something where they get to decide whenever they get to use it, at whatever time they want to use it. They have to clear it with us, and if we already have an event scheduled, they can't use it. So again, it's in the documents, very clear. That's how it was negotiated. And any comments to the contrary are wrong, along with a couple other comments that are wrong tonight, too, including that public records aren't produced, number one, and including that the clerk provides inaccurate information. Those are wrong, too.
Agreed. Anybody else?
Okay, so I would make a motion recommending the law director draft an ordinance allowing the city manager to enter into a contract with the FCC Foundation for the Mini Pitch project. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, the electric aggregation contract, and then conjunction with the second one, which is the natural gas aggregation contract. This is something that we've, city staff has been working on to secure better rates for both the electric and natural gas. Based off of the rough estimates, this, at a minimum, will save us $50,000 a year on just the electric. I do want to clear up, there's there is a clear distinction between gas, natural gas and electric. Electric is is a fixed price, okay? Natural gas is not a fixed price. What it is, is you're you're trying to play the the balance. So it could go up to a dollar, or it could go as low as 30 cents. If you look at, or 15 cents, let's just say, if you look at the attachments, you'll see the the actual sheets. So we priced it out over three or four people for natural gas and, excuse me, electric, and three people for for natural gas. So I just wanted to make sure I drew that out. What I wanted to discuss with council is, you'll see the different suppliers. You'll see 12-month, 24-month, 36 and 48. I wanted to make sure that I was, you know, I'm comfortable making a recommendation, but the the ordinance itself is created to allow us to type that in, to reflect the wishes of council. But once again, I I think we're seeing there's the validity, or volatility, excuse me, of the natural gas, but the electric is is continues to rise. And although this is only for city-owned properties, this is something that I think is in our best interest. It gives us certainly a savings, and I think is something we need to act on now before the prices continue to increase. So as it relates to the electric aggregation, you'll see FreePoint, AEP, and two other ones. You'll see highlighted between the terms, which is the best rate. My recommendation would be to go with the 24-month. That's what I'm used to to utilizing. But we can go as as high as 48 months, and that's up to council. But I wanted to get council's input on that and and to keep moving from there.
If it was in there, what is the rate? I was trying to, do we have the rate that were, was it buried in there, and I just missed it?
Current penny, you mean?
Yeah.
I know I can pull that if you give me one second.
Yeah, I was looking for it. And that was a, and I've been through this in other businesses, and I I see the benefit. I do, I certainly see the benefit. To city manager's point, it is volatile. I mean, you know, I I've seen more positives than negatives, but there is that off chance. I know some communities, and I don't know if you work with many communities that have it as a community as a whole where they've actually passed this. I know up the road, they have it, you know, for all their citizens. You can opt in and opt out of it, but it but it is available. So I I certainly think this would be a positive first step, in a way that maybe we could offer our citizens some additional savings. And obviously, if we're saving money, they're saving money. So that's, you know, that's certainly something that I do see the benefit. But-
What would be, like, as you look, Benjamin, just locking in that rate if we went for 48 months versus 24, obviously? I mean, is that potential increases? It seems crazy not to lock it in for four years.
Yeah. And and, you know, we have an opt-out, it would be an opt-out contract. So if, for whatever reason, it, I shouldn't say for whatever reason, in the event that it went lower, then we would just simply opt out of that, out of that contract. So there's really no reason not to go with the 48, other than I'm just used to going with the 24. Wondered, there's there's no real right answer here, other than, of course, you're you're looking at the rates, and you look at- rates, and you look at the 24-month versus that of the 36, you know, there's not a staggering, or even if you go to the 48, there's not a huge difference.
No.
Slightly, I mean, it's-
Doesn't it go up hundreds?
Or zeros, yeah.
It goes up, and of course, depending upon the usage, you know, that obviously fluctuates the total cost of the bill. But in terms of what the actual variable is itself, there's not a-
And I know they do it all, are there any local communities that are using any of those four that you're aware of, you know?
I do know that FreePoint has been utilized often. AEP is, that's who we used up north at my previous employer. That's the Duke Energy up there. So I am very familiar with them. The other two I'm not familiar with in terms of the electric.
If we're looking at aggregating to save money on electric, have we had put any thought into potentially putting solar panels on city-owned properties to get away from having to pay as much for electric in general? I know that's kind of aside from this topic, but it seems like a good time to bring it up and maybe start thinking that way.
So, Mr. Price, and please let me know if I'm incorrect with the statement. I know this has been discussed. I know that our intern was working with a company, Garrett Brewer, I believe, to conduct a, we'll call it an energy audit, I believe is actually the term utilized, to determine where our areas of opportunity were. The meeting that I went to, we did discuss that of the solar panels, that it was determining, okay, what is the actual cost to that? And we've, I stated, we need to come up with a plan, you know, to just go for a $300,000 solar panel. I don't know if that's the best approach. If we had a plan and say, okay, similar to anything that we do, we make this investment, this is the ROI, this is how much it's going to cost, how do we work it into a budget? That was sort of the, what I tried to communicate. Hopefully, I did communicate.
This would not prevent us. I mean, we can certainly look into that.
It would not prevent us.
Yeah, we can save money. I mean, you know, I've heard, I've seen the pros and cons to your point of what the ROI is, and that, to me, that's what it's gonna come down to.
Sure.
Right.
But I guess what I'm getting at with this is, this is, in my opinion, a first step to addressing some of these issues. Some of the other things we discussed is the LED lights. It's very easy, okay? So when we have a light that's burned out, switch to LED lights, you know, it's very easy. So there's little things, little steps, baby steps that we can take to start accomplishing some of these initiatives. And then some of the bigger ones, then, you know, we gotta discuss that, obviously, further than replacing light bulbs. That's a little bit easier to accomplish there.
And the rate volatilities, I mean, I see it in all the jurisdictions, to the point where they won't hold a price for a night. That's how volatile it is, so.
Right. Well, anyone who's gotten their most rea, I mean, it's been all over the here. So, I mean, the only good thing, Mother Nature's been good. I've had every window open, so, yeah. So what, except that, obviously, we have an opt-out, and it's so minor, what would be the drawback to having four years, in your opinion?
I don't believe there is a drawback. It's just based off of what I've done in the past. So I don't believe there is a drawback, other than there is a subtle difference in terms of the price. But once again, you're fixing that in for a longer period of time. So if we're saving $50,000 this year, you know, you draw it out four years from now, I mean, that could be a heck of a lot more. And that's on the low side. So I don't really think there's a drawback, per se, especially with the opt-out. You know, if it goes lower than that, and especially if it goes way lower, then there's no reason we wouldn't opt out.
Yep.
Makes sense to me.
So are we looking here for an ordinance to enter into a contract with one of these specific suppliers here for a specific amount of time? So-
Correct.
Do we need to then, I guess, as a group, how are we going to, are we all in favor of the 48-month? Are we in favor of the 24-month? Like, I think in general, aggregating is a great idea, but what do we want to do?
Yeah, I would not be objective with 48. I'm okay, especially if the opt-out is there. It's, like I said, it's a subtle difference higher, but to me, the long-term, the volatility, and I'll be honest with you, I don't see it going down, you know?
I don't think so.
Okay, so based on, yeah, based on what I'm hearing around me, then, I would make a motion recommending that the law director draft an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with AEP for a term of 48 months for the purposes of electricity aggregation at city-owned property.
Second.
Well said.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Thank you. And then moving on to natural gas, similar conversation, with the exception that this only goes up to 36 months. Once again, this is something that the prices fluctuate, so you're trying to play the average there. This is new to me, so I would be comfortable, especially considering that the 24-month and 36-month is the exact same price, to just go with the 36. But I know that the natural gas, there is a lot of volatility with that, and it's important to play the average. So some months it might be lower, some months it might be higher, you're trying to play the average.
So, if that being said, do you roll the dice and take the bigger savings for one year and reevaluate it, or, you know?
It's good.
If it's, because obviously, it fluctuates a lot more than electric. So, and to your point, sometimes the natural gas, it all depends on what Mother Nature's in store for us, and what kind of seasons we have.
I'm sorry, Kim?
I'm sorry, your idea is to go in 12 months?
Yeah, and, because it is a significant savings.
So, to put things into perspective, over the last year, Duke's rates have been as low as 56 cents and as high as $1.14.
Short gas is what you're saying.
For natural gas. So even with these rates, we're still lower than what the low has been for Duke.
So I'll do 36.
Me personally, I would lock this in 36-month, given the numbers that Benjamin just provided.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm just throwing it out there. I can, you know, I'm not passionate about, as long as we're saving money, you know, and if we want to, you know, depends what your guts telling you. What do you think, you know? And again, it's, there's no exact science to it, so. If you guys all think, you know.
Great. I would make a motion, then, recommending that the law director draft an ordinance allowing the city manager to enter into a contract with Symmetry for the term length 36-month for the purposes of natural gas aggregation.
Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is AEDs and city-owned parks.
Just for, because I'm gonna have some questions, not to put Mark Baird on the spot, Chief Baird, because I have some questions. I may have some additional questions, I think, that will satisfy some of our guests, too, so. All right, sorry.
No worries. Thank you, Chief Baird, for being here. So what I have here is, this was a discussion, oh, I forget how many meetings ago, and I give credit to the fire department. They did all this research and put it on the paper for me. I'm simply presenting it. You've got three different options. Option one, two, three, obviously, they're all different. And maybe, Chief, you can explain the differences, other than, or Mr. Velardo. I can state the obvious differences between that of how it's stored, and then the price points. But I don't know if there's any maybe further detail you want to provide. But I really just wanted it, this is simply a discussion. I apologize, I did not tell Chief Baird he'd be put on the spot, so.
Well, I only bring it up because I would like that done tonight. I think, I'm passionate about this. I think it's long overdue, and whatever we come up with, whatever we're comfortable with, I don't think we need to wait another day. So that's why I am putting him on the spot. And the other thing, I've seen all these in different parks, and in my previous career, I spent a lot of time doing all these. And I really like option three. And you can kind of tell me why I shouldn't like option three, only because it has all the enhancements that I think would truly benefit, meaning that it's monitored. Once you open the door, it calls 911 for you. There's no delay in getting it, you know? In these situations, seconds matter. Seconds matter. And anything that we can do to, I mean, we have one right here in this building. We have one right there for a reason, because we saw the need, and whatever reason, it never happened in all our parks. But I would like to really push to number three, only, and again, Chief, you can step in if, and I know it costs more upfront, but I just think, if we're gonna have this, I think we should do it right. We should make sure it's monitored, we should make sure it's readily checked.
The only thing I like about option one and two is I think they maintain it. Like, we don't, what about, I don't know about option three, does it really say that in there, does it?
Well, the-
Or maybe it does.
It includes an annual maintenance plan for the AED and the cabinet.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is, okay.
But it also not included in the cost, though, too, is two-by-two-foot concrete pad needed for placement and electrical hookup.
Correct. Those are all enhancements.
I agree we need them, but I just, I agree we need them, I just don't, maybe Chief can explain more. Is it worth triple the cost, is what I'm thinking? Because we could buy more.
Over the, yeah, up front, but if you look at the five-year cost.
Five-year cost.
Well, true. That's true, it averages out.
Yeah. The upfront, because, again, they are more secure. And again, I don't want to, but if you go down in the City of Loveland, correct me if I'm wrong, you have the same ones that are in the City of Loveland right now, throughout the bike trail and through down there. And I've reached out to some of their folks, and they actually go around monthly and just kind of take a check. And, correct me if I'm wrong, some of them, don't they send a signal? Yeah, they send a signal, so.
And I think Summit Park has option three as well, correct?
Yeah.
I don't know. Wouldn't surprise me.
I'm pretty sure.
Right. Wouldn't surprise me.
They're probably gold-plated at Summit Park, though.
I was waiting. I, District Chief Miller, it's been a month or so since I've looked at this, but we talked our way through this. And really, quite frankly, if you're gonna be in the business, you have to be in the business 24/7. You can't just hang them on a wall and forget about them, because AEDs have batteries, AEDs have defibrillation pads that expire on a regular basis, and they just simply have to be looked over during their existence. And if you're going to get into it, then you're going to have to jump into it with both feet, because the last thing that you want is to take an option that doesn't have any kind of security features, and the next thing you know, the AED has been stolen, and nobody knows what happened to it. You have to have, if you're going to make it available 24/7, it's got to be in a cabinet in a way that, in a cabinet and stored in a way that it is weatherproof 24/7, short of a tornado or something, flood, something like that. And this is just simply a situation where it may not be the most palatable cost-wise, but if you're in the business, then you gotta be in the business. And with both feet, and you're into it for the duration. These are incredibly important features, incredibly important. And as they, as they shared, and we talked after the meeting several months ago about the situation, you know, if you're going to have, if you're gonna have a chance to do, to do, to have a save in a cardiac arrest situation, in most cases, having that AED there near immediately is paramount. Minutes equal, minutes delay equal muscle damage to the heart, and you only have a small window to work with. And the idea of AED, 911, advanced life support, ambulance service, and cardiac-ready hospitals nearby is to give whoever suffers the medical event the most, the most possible chance to live. And this is just part of the chain of survival, as it's called, early AED access.
Now, this one's, the third one says it does not require code. Have other communities had any issues with theft or damage, or?
It sets off the alarm.
It sets the alarm, so.
And it actually ta, it's got a little camera on it. So you would, I mean, someone could still take it, obviously, but-
But you're being recorded.
Yeah, they would be recorded.
Then what happens after the five years? Is that the lifespan? Then you have to repurchase a new one?
I can't answer that question. Probably not, but-
I know one of them specified there's a 10-year.
Yeah, Mayor, and again, you're just talking about the AED.
Well, because I assume that the year two, year three, year four, that's probably the maintenance cost. So it's given us a total five-year cost. But I was just wondering, what happens after five years?
Yeah, you would probably, I'm sure you would have to have some sort of continuation cost.
So one of the things that we find out with AEDs, we have, besides the fact that we have the heavy-duty heart monitor defibrillators that are in the ambulances, we also carry at least two, if not three, AEDs, because I have one in my vehicle. Those AEDs have to have software upgrades on a fairly regular basis, especially if, well, just like every other computer, it's got firmware updates that needs to have, to happen to them. And if the American Heart Association changes the standards in any way for CPR, AEDs are all set up to help prompt people through the CPR process and the process of using them. I mean, they're very, they're very intuitive, once you pop the lid open and trigger them, to walk you through what you're supposed to do in that, in that emergency. So they're, they're very, very much a computer, and they have to have certain things done to them. Like ours, you know, they're serviced, everything in our place is serviced every year. Most of the time, the AEDs are just simply making sure everything's working properly. But every now and again, they drop a firmware update in them. And I'm sure this is exactly the same way. The AEDs will last longer than five years. It's the batteries that have to be replaced. I mean, we, until the manufacturers just finally stop supporting them for maintenance, they, they'll, they'll continue to operate as long as they're taken care of.
But I don't think you'd have that, like, 19, you would not have another 15-
You would not have to pay that $15,000 again.
Yeah, it would be some sort of yearly maintenance cost, or whatever. I'm sure, you know.
I know sometimes businesses have sponsored them, because our family business has bought some for places. Is that an option, maybe, to reach out to some local businesses, to see if they would sponsor one or purchase one?
So in conjunction with that question, I can confidently tell you, we are not prepared in terms of an ordinance tonight. I can think fast on my feet, and we can adjust, and if we need to schedule another meeting in advance, the next one, then so be it. But due to us not being prepared in terms of an ordinance, what I could do is that I could see if there's other opportunities, I'll get better answers in terms of the battery and what that looks like, and-
I definitely think we need them. Are we thinking every park?
How many are we thinking?
I think you gotta put them in every park.
I agree with that. But also, too, if, when you come back with information on that, Benjamin, if you would also come back with a kind of a rough idea of how much it would cost to put in the concrete pad and electrical feed, if we were to go with option number three. That way, we have a whole picture of it, and we're fully prepared.
Something staff could do in-house.
Does the same one need to be at every park?
That's what I'm thinking, too. Like, maybe there's, some of the parks that aren't used as much could have one, but maybe not as-
You know, maybe option two, I mean, I don't know what-
Sure, yeah, no, that's- I think you're splitting hairs. I think you're splitting hairs. You do it, you do it consistent, you do it throughout. That way, people-
Maybe we phased it in, because it wasn't in the budget, so I'm thinking, so.
It doesn't matter what park they're in, they know what's there. The other thing, I mean, again, like, let's, let's come back and talk about this some more with some more idea on, you know, what those additional costs might be. But I really like the idea of option three being to where it takes a photograph of someone, you don't have to call 911 first to get a code to get in, you know?
I do like that.
I like that a lot. Right, so I think we need to figure out, A, how many do we actually need? Because the pricing here is listed for two units, right? We need to figure out, even if we're able to do it internally from a budgetary standpoint, how much is it gonna cost for the concrete and the electric? But to Ralph's point, let's go, like, let's move. It's been too long. We do need to have these in our parks. Very important. So I would just urge us to have a little more, yeah.
And I'm just thinking, because it wasn't in the budget, could we start with, like, two, and then budget this fall to put in the rest in the spring and the rest of the parks, or something?
Yeah.
I would reluctantly agree with that, but as long as, as long as we move forward, yeah. So, because I, I'll be quite honest with you, and Chief, you can probably speak on this even better than I can, within the next three to five years, every business will have them. I mean, we're getting to the point now where they're gonna be, not necessarily required, or they probably will be required, but, you know, they've done it now in all public buildings, and, you know, schools have them, malls have them, you know, commonplace, the, the cost has gone significantly less. And again, there's no time like the present to correct this, you know, so.
And would any of the, like, the five points grant park money, could that be used for that?
For the one five points?
As long as it's at five points, I'll confirm that, but I don't see any, any issues currently. But I'll confirm that before I make a commitment.
And I agree for budgetary, but obviously, we take our, probably our two biggest parks, if we're only putting two, if you can only afford to put two in this year, and look at some additional funding sources, I would certainly agree with that, and they're, you know, spaced out.
But, but even if we can use that five points funding, then obviously, that means we can put it at one other park, if we were to choose to put it at five, but naturally, there's events there, so that would make probably a lot of sense.
They're on Riverside for the most used.
This may sound a little weird, and I'm not trying to crack any type of joke at all. There's no, like, Costco discount if we- There's no, like, Costco discount if we buy bulk. If we buy them all at once, do we get a discount as opposed to putting two in now and then four in next year? Like, I, I want to make sure that we go into this understanding how we get the best bang for our buck. But again, I want us to move quickly and, like, get this taken care of, so just putting that out there.
Well, what we could do is we could reach out to them and price it for all the parks, so we at least know what that total amount is. And then we can work backwards from there and figure out what we can do. Sound good?
Thank you.
And then, in terms of the cost, the, the concrete pad, we definitely do that in-house, but the electric, we'll figure that out and, and report back to council.
And though I won't be here next week, I'm confident my colleagues will move forward with this, and I, I look forward to watching it from afar of having a successful ordinance draft.
Chief, I assume that Centos doesn't offer another option, like, they don't offer this level of AED?
I'm not, I can't speak to that. District Chief Miller did the work on this project. I'm sure he can find the information out, whatever, whatever additional information you want, including bulk pricing, I'm sure he can work on that. Would be glad to. He's a big supporter of this, so, I mean, this is, this is a work of, of love, really.
And do you know, Chief, all our AED, and just for consistency, that we're going to be checking them and doing, I, I know they all function pretty much the same, but as far as brand, do you know, are we pretty consistent throughout the city?
I can't speak to that.
Okay, it just, it would make sense, that way pads and all that stuff are, as they get changed.
We're getting past the number of things I can remember without writing it down.
No, I didn't, again, I don't mean to put you on the spot at all.
I will, uh-
But, but those are, because, again, there are pads and things like that-
I will take that to Chief Miller as well.
We'll have to replace, and that, as our police officer, the, the police officers in the cars and all yours, that if we have consistency, it just makes the, the parts that we do have to replace on a regular basis readily available.
And I would say this illustrates very keenly why a charter amendment in this area would be necessary. Because if we had that additional spending authority-
Right.
Mr. Gunderson might be able to go tonight just based on a motion authorization. And can't, you know, he, I don't want him to sound like it's his, he thinks it's his fault. He couldn't go forward with an ordinance because it's outside his spending authority. So I wanted council to be aware, this is, this is why council, I think, smartly recommended that kind of a charter change to the public. So it could move much more agilely, capably, and quickly.
All right, any other discussion?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
We definitely will be moving forward.
Yes.
All righty, next on the list, Five Points Landing Grant Funds. This is something that I wanted to discuss last meeting, we kicked it to this meeting. I, I just wanted to get council's thoughts on this. We, we have about 420,000 that is allocated for Five Points. If you subtract the cost to what the irrigation, it comes in, and about 294,000 left over. So this can only be used at Five Points. Can't be used anywhere else, can't be used for water lines, you know, it's got to be the park. So I wanted to discuss this with council. I, I, of course, wasn't part of the process in terms of the creation of Five Points. I can look at renderings, and I can come up with some, what I think are creative ideas, but I wanted to throw this off council and get input from council. Some of the things that I've heard is the splash pad, you know, redoing that surface, that's about 40,000, to ensure that it's the right surface that eliminates falls and, and no further cracking. As well as around the, the splash pad itself, having some sort of pergola-type structure where it provides shade, and, and if there's maybe some swings, or, or if it's just shade and you put chairs underneath it. Those are some of the things that I've heard or come up with, mostly heard. So I just wanted to throw that off council, get your thoughts, and, and, not that we need a decision on this, on the spot, but just, it'll give me some, some, it'll, it'll better guide me, and then I can come with some numbers for whatever those items are.
Is there a current plan to address the Christmas tree? There is a current plan?
Yes.
In place?
Yes.
That would be one of my ideas for money from that grant, but if there's already a plan.
It's under warranty, so.
Yeah, it's under warranty.
It's under warranty? We've got a warranty on a tree?
Yeah.
Go to us.
But I, I would like to see us be true, again, the residents supported this, and so to stay consistent, obviously, with some of the things that we had hoped would have been included originally, that for financial reasons were deferred. But I, I would certainly hope that we would stay very consistent. The structures, the swings, I, I think those are some of the things we hear about. We've done as much as we can with what we can, with what we've done, but I, I would certainly advocate that we stay consistent with, you know, and not that we can't evolve some, but-
I think a covered shelter would be nice, where the bands usually set up if we have events?
Yeah.
Because you could actually put the tables under there. Also, when you're not having a band, so we have shade, and the umbrellas wouldn't have to be maybe as important.
Yeah.
But then you'd have a covered spot for, if we do have events or music.
Definitely, yeah, you know.
Yeah, shade.
Shade. The irrigation, obviously, is going to enhance that park, and, you know, it, it, let's face it, it is a centerpiece, you know, so. I'm not going to bring up the clock tower, but the, but some of the other amenities, I, I do think, and, and I, I agree with the mayor, too, that if you had some sort of, it doesn't have to be an elaborate, you know, amphitheater, but just some sort of-
Even from the restroom building, just come out and have shade.
And I've had people ask about, closer to where we are, where the high-top tables are? Chairs for the tables and shade sales?
Yeah.
In that space.
I like the idea of shade sales.
Yeah.
Also had people ask about artificial turf in the dog park.
I've seen that, where they do-
Shade for the dog park?
Artificial turf, and it gets mighty in the fall and the spring.
True, the grasses gets torn out.
Yeah, I've had a lot of people say, why don't you put fake turf in the dog park?
I, I have seen they do, or have other things like that.
Not from those funds, but just as we all are talking about it, that playground fund money that's somewhere.
From, yeah, from the original.
From the Stop Milford Main.
Yeah.
Save Milford Main.
That'd have to be spent there also.
Yes, but we talked about doing something history-wise, that would, you know, what was on that spot, and however it is, I'm not that-
Covered bulletin board on the building that, and, and the history about the school and all that.
Or something that, I mean, again, that's not under those funds, but just something to consider, too.
I still think, like, some outdoor games, like, that's something simple, that, like, so if the family does go there, there's something more to do than just a splash pad. I know we didn't want a playground there or anything else, but just some kind of, like, the outdoor checker, you know, something.
As a testament to the umbrellas blowing away many times, chasing them down the street, I just, I worry about things moving.
You know what I would love, since you brought it? I would love our trash cans that we have at Five Points, the ones with the silly round hole, perhaps to be moved to Main Street to be used as recycling with the round hole. And we get real trash cans that have a wider spot, so real garbage that is, like, the other day, I saw somebody struggling with their clam shell, trying to get it in that little hole.
You can't, yeah.
And you can't get it in, and why, why cause one more hurdle for somebody that is trying to pick up their garbage to, to not being able to do so? So maybe we could relocate those other trash cans that, you know, for recycling.
But, do you want like a list, or, I mean, we, this is our second meeting, we kind of throw this out.
Yeah, so-
Maybe try to sell some of these-
Well, I, I've got a direction now, so what I'll do is I'll price out some of these items, and then I'll come back to council, and, and I've got quite a few, and we can go from there.
Is there an expiration date on these funds?
I don't know that for a fact. I want to say that that 400,000, I, I think there is some sort of expiration on that. The Claremont County Park Grants, I, I think there is on that as well, that's 20,000. I'll, I'll get that and ensure that council's aware of that as well.
Can we enhance the, would enhancing the sidewalk crossing there, would, would that be part of something we can look at, too?
I think that'd be great.
Especially on the Lila, Short Lila side.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm, very good idea.
Which is, we'll talk about later, but I think we can go throughout the city.
Yeah, true.
But, yeah.
Excellent.
Great discussions.
All right, thank you. And then last on the agenda, it's a agenda item to consider raising the cinema tax in the City of Milford. One of the things I wanted to sort of discuss before we really get into any real specifics. This is, this is titled the Cinema Tax, but under the Ohio Revised Code, it's really an admissions tax. And if you look at the, the cinema admission tax in terms of what we have here locally, it says cinema admission tax, but it, it's really an admission tax, so it's not just for cinemas. You look at our, our, our local documents, and it talks about cinemas, it talks about some other items. I also put in here the City of Monroe and, and what they put in their, in admission tax ordinance. And really, what we're, what we're looking at here is, we, we've, there's been a big push with Claremont County to offer tournaments throughout the, throughout Claremont County. Finley Ray is a prime location for that, certainly the cinema is part of it. And, and one of the, the perks of having that is, is we're able to have public improvements as one of the expenditures for those taxes. So we know that there's significant issues with, I shouldn't say significant issues, there's issues with the Parkway in terms of accessibility. There's turn, there's issues with the Finley Ray area and the traffic control and some of the accessibility to that park. And this was a way that we looked at trying to figure out how we could pay for some of those costs. So if, if you look at the documents provided, there's also the, the Ohio Revised Code document that discusses, majority of the, the cities throughout the state have a 3%. I, I mentioned that Monroe's got a 5%, Columbus has got a 5%, Cleveland's got an 8%. So there is a range.
Correct.
And I just wanted to bring this up for discussion, there's certainly no decisions that are going to be made, but I wanted to get council's input on this and, and figure out if there were support here. But I, I believe there's a need, I think this is a way that we can pay for some of these public improvements. And, you know, the, the goal is not to create a hardship by any means. I, I think we're just trying to find ways to address some of the issues that we have at hand.
I would like to know the, the benefit, and first of all, I, I, as it stands, I'm really not in favor of changing it at this point. I would like to look at some other options, or entertain this, because is this the only entity? I know it's an admissions tax, but when other places hold events where they charge admission, are we collecting that, that tax?
Yeah, is it just affecting?
Because I don't think we are. I don't think we are. So I, I think it's being unfairly, you know, imposed upon just one entity right now. So I would like to know if we have, and again, this is before your time, so this is not, nothing that you dealt with, but one of my angst to this was, I, I don't think it's being administered the way, you know, as in true admissions tax. Because we do have events at other places that charge, you know, to get in, and I don't believe we're charging that, that tax. I don't think we're administering that tax to Minot.
And probably, yeah.
Yeah. So I, I just would like to see that if we were going to do this, that we come up within some protocols to ensure that this tax is being fairly, yeah, around, so.
Yeah.
So that, that would be the only thing. And then also, what's the dollar, what, you know, what, did you have an idea, or did you, of what you would recommend? Or, not to recommend, or, or did you have an amount?
I would like to see it go to at least 5%. I, I don't agree with the 8%, I, I don't, I don't, that wouldn't be my recommendation, but I would like at least the 5%.
Okay.
How, what would that, how much would that affect a ticket, I guess is what I'm wondering, too, then?
I don't know, you said a movie ticket's how much?
Yeah, I mean, it depends upon the day and the time. A perfect example is a matinee is about a $6, you know, ticket, so.
Do you mind, because we're talking about you, just so we get you on the record.
So, six dollars is 36 cents.
But you, yeah, yeah.
Every time Ralph says that, he's putting someone on the spot, just to-
Yeah.
No, I'd be happy to answer any question, but, yeah, I mean, it depends upon the day, you know, we, we charge like a matinee price at $6, so, you know, at 3% of that, I think it's about 13 cents.
Yeah.
So.
Would you say we go up to 36 cents or not?
How many Cinemark cinemas are in the, in the Greater Cincinnati?
Greater Cincinnati? There's four of us, though we've got one-
And then how many ever have admissions tax in the communities that you're in?
In the communities that we're in, I can't speak of Florence in Kentucky, I'm not 100% sure there. But I know that Oakley Cinemas is under the, the City of Cincinnati, and I do believe Western Hills has one as well.
That would be City also.
Right.
And do you know what the city is, do you know what it, I don't know what it is.
Cincinnati is 3%.
I believe it's three, yeah.
Yeah.
We're currently at three, so 3%, which is what it's currently is, 18 cents. And then if you were to, let's just say, 6 cents, that bumps it up to 36 cents, to just use his example and put it in a real-world example, that's the difference.
Could you put together and bring back for us how much we're currently bringing in off of this admissions tax? And then with your proposed increase, how much additional that would bring in if it were to go into place?
Well, we've seen, unfortunately, to your point, the, the money that we used to bring in is obviously a direct, you know-
Yeah, to his point, they're still struggling to recover to full levels pre-pandemic, yeah.
Absolutely, and I, I appreciate the fact that, you know, that there's other admissions. But I, I think that, you know, when it comes down to it, I mean, we're going to bear the brunt of that, that decision. You know, using a, a parallel there, I know, you know, 10, 15 years ago, Mason was, was looking at the same thing. And Kings Island, you know, really, you know, fought against it.
There was a little water park that was highly opposed to that at the time, because-
So, I mean, Mason voted it down, you know, just based upon the burden would put upon the, the admissions to the park. So again, I, I do appreciate that there are other entities that would technically be admission, but I think when you boil it down, it's, it's going to be on our shoulders or our, our patrons' shoulders more than, more than anyone.
And in full disclosure, 10 years ago, I, I worked for the agency, the water park, and I advocated very strongly against the admission tax. Because I always looked at it that we, we were being a part of that, and if I could have charged a dollar more and, and get to the bottom dollar, or get to the bottom line, that I can enhance our business with, with additional amenities, we kept it in-house. So in full disclosure, I was very successful in advocating against any type of admissions tax, so.
Yeah, and to add on to that, I mean, we've got a lot of competition, I mean, Cincinnati's just very overscreened. But, I mean, the, the drive from my parking lot to my four closest competitors is not much, you know? So we're trying our hardest to keep those prices as low as possible to keep people keep coming to, to Milford. But it's, it's an uphill battle, but like I said, you know, four competitors can be reached within 20 minutes tops.
What is your, like, not your high, but what is your highest movie price ticket?
Well, that-
Like, your regular, I'm going to the movies at 7:30 on a Friday night?
Sure, it's about $10.25. For, you know, again, there's variables there, you know, 3D obviously costs more.
Sure.
We run a lot of foreign films that, that have a, a higher cost or operas and stuff like that. But if you're just, you're run-of-the-mill Hollywood release movie on a Friday night, it's going to be about 10.25.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I would also like to see a list of the other people that if they're not paying, that should be.
Yeah, maybe that makes a big-
I mean, I don't know what all that would look like, but to me, if there's other people that aren't paying, that's the first place to start.
That's what I was just thinking.
Yeah, that's what I was referring to, there's concerts that are-
We need to look, we need to look at our definition of operator, because operator is very tightly defined, and that was passed 25 years ago. So we need to look at how operator is defined, because I'm not sure anybody else is-
Qualifies.
Right.
Yeah, reading this, I, I'm not sure anyone else does.
Correct.
And that's where, once again, I want to draw the distinction here, that this is really an admissions tax, so.
Right, we need to, we need to change operator.
Although this one, I've read it once, and, and now skimming it again, it's definitely very much skewed towards the cinema.
I'm not sure somebody else-
It's literally called in a cinema admission tax, so to state the obvious there, I think this needs to be broader. And, and that is, that is my approach from the start, is this needs to be broader towards if it's tournaments, if there's other concerts, whatever that looks like. I know that there's, based off of the one, and Mr. Pacheco sent me a few different ones, there, it's not a standard rules, a set of rules. There's, there's definitely differences amongst them, whether it's Cincinnati, Monroe, Columbus, that even draw out, you know, all of them pretty much draw out, if it's anything religious, nonprofit, so forth.
What I'm here, sorry.
But even like Monroe, I'm sorry to interrupt, I think they've got a caveat, and if it's under $10, it doesn't qualify. So there's certain rules that you can throw in there, but I'll, I'll-
Well, I think you got into when you, like, high school, I don't know if they, you don't get charged, I know, uh, when you go to events like at the schools and things like that, sporting games. Yeah, I know football, but no, I'm talking in the city, uh, I mean, I think there was something that it wasn't going to affect that because it was such a low ticket.
So, I mean, Monroe's, to your point, Mr. Velardo, Monroe's is a tax of 5% on the amount paid for admission to any place, including admission by a season ticket or subscription. So what I think would help Mr. Gunnerson and me, depending, to, to make sure we reflect council's will, is for you all to take a look at this Monroe and say, is this something you want to do? Because again, right now, operator, and I, as I read it, is confined to cinema. And I'm, what I'm hearing is you want a broader def, everybody wants a broader definition.
Well, I, consistent is what I'm looking for.
The other thing is too, like enforcing, like it's, you know, someone holds an event, then we have to know to enforce that and all that.
Yeah, that, that would be the thing.
I understand his concerns, but, I mean, I also think too, like, I don't think many people are not going to go for 16 cents more. I mean, I don't think that's going to totally deter anybody from going to a movie.
Yeah.
16 cents.
And some, you know, depending on what other things it might apply to, 3% of that, you might go out.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes the difference.
Right.
Right?
But this is going to require, my point is just, again, to make sure I express the council, the council's will and that you see the options. You're going to need to, if you look at the Monroe, that would be a good example for expanding your options. You may say, no, I don't like that, or yes, but that would help. I think Mr. Gunnerson and me, I don't want to speak for you, but that certainly would help me draft what you want.
Yeah, and I, I even think at Monroe's, it, it actually says if it's under $10, it doesn't qualify.
Right, that's correct.
So, once again, you can create it to whatever we want if, if need be.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on that? Thank you for being here and sharing concerns.
Thank you.
And that is all I have, thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting?
So moved, second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, that takes us to Mr. Pacheco and new businesses, ordinances and resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor, ordinance number 25-386, an ordinance amending ordinance 17-1313, an ordinance authorizing the city of Milford property tax rebate incentive program agreement with Little Miami Brewing Company. Whereas the council of the city of Milford believes the property tax rebate incentive program is not implemented to the fullest extent allowed under the previous agreement with the Little Miami Brewing Company is authorized by ordinance 17-1313. And whereas the council of the city of Milford desires to extend the pro, benefits of the program and to grant a two-year extension extending and ending in 2026, excuse me, for the program to better represent what the increased taxable value hit the property when the increased taxable value hit the property tax card for the Little Miami Event Center, now therefore being ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The council of the city of Milford hereby authorize the city manager to amend the property tax rebate incentive program with the Little Miami Brewing Company and to extend the date of the agreement through 2026. Section 2 pursuant to and in accordance with sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter. This ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only, second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-386, an ordinance amending ordinance 17-1313, an ordinance authorizing the city of Milford property tax rebate incentive program agreement with the Little Miami Brewing Company.
Motion to adopt, second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-389, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into agreement with FC Cincinnati Foundation for the construction of a mini pitch at Riverside 2. Whereas the city of Milford and FC City Foundation have agreed to construct a mini pitch at Riverside 2 Park for youth and addition, and adult recreational use to promote soccer and an active and healthy lifestyle within the community, now therefore being ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The council of the city of Milford authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with FC City Foundation for the construction of a mini pitch at Riverside 2 Park. The agreement is fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter, Section 2. Under and in accordance with sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only, second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-389, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with FC Cincinnati Foundation for the construction of a mini pitch at Riverside 2.
Motion to adopt, second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
On the AEP. So what I'm doing, just so, uh, council, per the committee on the whole discussion, asks us to do AEP 48 months. I'm just trying to have the, put the rate in there. Point 684. So as, as provided in the council attached packet, that rate that I'm going to fill in is point, uh, 06843. Is that correct, Mr. Gunnerson?
That is correct.
Thank you. I'm not trying to cross-examine you, I just want to make sure I get it right. Although it would be fun to cross-examine you. Anyway, thank you. I'll need that for the next one, too. Ordinance number 25-390, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an electric aggregation agreement with AEP for city-owned properties, Section 1. The council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into a 48-month agreement with AEP to provide fixed electric rates for city-owned properties at an amount equal to or less than .06843 cents. This, uh, electric aggregation agreement is a key step in ensuring both fiscal responsibility and long-term financial stability for the entire community. The agreement is fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2, under and in accordance with sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only, second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-390, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into electric aggregation agreement with AEP for city-owned property.
Motion to adopt, second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Bear with me, please, Mayor.
Okay. Just don't ask me to entertain.
What if she said no?
No, 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 no.
Bear with me, no.
That's all the time I needed. Ordinance number 25-391, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a natural gas aggregation agreement with symmetry for a city-owned property. Section 1, the council of the city of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into a 36-month agreement with symmetry to provide fixed natural gas rates for city-owned properties at an amount equal to or less than .529 cents. This electric aggregation agreement is a key step in ensuring both fiscal responsibility and long-term financial stability for the entire community. The agreement is fully incorporated by reference under and in accordance with section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2, under and in accordance with sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to suspend the rules and read by title only, second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Uh, an ord, uh, ordinance number 25-391, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a natural gas aggregation agreement with symmetry for city-owned property.
Motion to adopt, second.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor, if I would, with, with your indulgence, just a couple of things that, that the last couple of meetings you brought out. I think that, uh, what I'm going to provide to council, some, what are some rules for, for public comment, governing public comment? And I'll let council look at those, and if council wants to adopt, they can. If council doesn't want to adopt, that's, you want me to do that? Okay, I'm working on that for another jurisdiction, so you can have the benefit of that if you'd like it, and we'll, and we'll do that.
Somewhere we had rule, I mean, once upon a time, we actually had an egg timer once.
Well, that's, you know, I've, I've looked at, I've looked at the current rules, and the current rules that I see don't necessarily, aren't as clear as maybe they can and should be. And so, uh, I'll just show you what I've recommended for someone else recently, and you guys can look at that. The other thing is, because I don't feel the need to respond to anything. But for the record, for those people who are actually listening and want to hear a response as opposed to just launching a harangue, what I would say is, this has been, with related to the pitch, it's been on the agenda in terms of, of both the MOU for four months. Everybody's known council's position for four months. There isn't any need to be cross-examined by someone about what the reasons are, and they don't agree. You know what? That's to be the American system, you don't have to agree. Here's the thing, you all were elected to make that determination. So you made that determination, you were transparent about it, you told people why. It's government that works best, and this council, again, has shown from the last meeting that if, uh, that they respond, as Mr. Gunnerson said earlier. And so what I would say is, uh, for people who want to hear an answer that they may not like, but at least is an answer, is you've been talking about this for four months. There's no reason to continue to keep talking about it when you've already explained what your reasons are. And so I appreciate the mayor's comments in that regard and agree with them. The last thing I'd say is, on the public records, people get what they're entitled to, and they don't get what they're not entitled to. And we will, we will vigorously, uh, enforce that law in the city, and I appreciate the opportunity to do so. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, and Jackie does an amazing job of keeping those records out.
Yeah, yeah, look at Jackie.
Pause to you.
She does not get near the kudos.
And, and I forgot to, I forgot to say this last time, and, and I need to say it publicly. We had 15 or 16, uh, pieces of legislation, and, you know, she put those together. And so I, I forgot to say that last time, but I remember to say it this time, so good for, good for me.
And before, since this is kind of old business, can we talk real quick about the charter review? What, as we get closer, when, when is that going out to?
It's going out.
Yeah.
It's, it's processing now, okay.
And again, we may not get anyone, what, I, I know we can't, uh, support one way or the other from up here, but can we have informational sessions or things like that, or just the opportunity? Because one of the disconnects, I, I believe it failed last time, is people truly didn't understand. Or, and even though we, we do everything we're supposed to do, send it out, I don't think people truly understand whether they, they should or shouldn't support it. So is there a way we can, whether we do a town hall types or, or something along that lines?
I was thinking like a fact, like cheat, so people do call city hall, like there's someone that can at least answer their questions.
I don't mean that, but just give the opportunity so that.
We had, yeah, we had public hearings.
Yeah.
Have public hearings.
Already.
I understand that.
There'd be more questions once they get to the.
I'm not talking about from a city standpoint, what can we do from a, you know?
When people get the mailing, there's going to be a lot of questions.
Correct.
I'm sure.
Can we, can we use a office hours with the city manager session to just put facts out there? Or would that be seen as the city putting their thumb on the scale?
No, so, yeah, you can just, you can answer the consequences of whether you pass it or not. So that's what I, so, but it's not even a, we're not saying yes or no, per se. We're saying, here's the, here's, benefit, sounds like a yes or no. Here's the consequence. If we don't pass our charter amendment, what we want to do with, it means X, and if we do pass it, it means Y, correct?
And I just know if we remain silent, per se, and don't keep making sure that the people, it's to the forefront, when they go to the ballot, I, I don't know that they'll have all the information whether they should or shouldn't support.
Well, that's why I brought up tonight, that, that, that point was very acute tonight, because Mr. Gunnerson couldn't go forward with the AD, with, with the, the AD purchases because they were above his spending authority and that the charter seeks to change that. So to your point, that is precisely why I raised that, so people would be aware. By the way, what I understand, you know, the other thing too, is there was public comment made very professionally about questions. The, the person who made the, the questions understood and appreciated that we would answer them at a separate time, and so that's, that's good government, it's work. Somebody's got a question, they ask it, they want an answer, he gave them an answer. It was well done by the public and by this council.
So office with the hours, or office hours with the city manager, is that? All in favor? All right.
I have that idea.
A week come out, once everybody has gotten the mailing, you have digested it, yeah.
I think that that series is a great way to educate our public. As a matter of fact, I would even put out there for future considerations of yours maybe, and kind of inspired by our citizens police academy, doing like a city council 101, where you use that time to kind of educate our folks on how ordinances are created and how they make it to council.
Yes.
How, that way, in the future, people understand for it to get to point B, it had to go through point A first, right? So I think the more well-educated we can make, we can make our population, the better for everyone, right? I, I really love how engaged the citizenry has been on these important topics. I think educating them kind of on how council works would have done away with some of the more acrimonious type of exchanges and kind of, for lack of a better term, accusations and, and things like that.